You guys good down there? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting. Today is Tuesday, January fifteenth, 2019. It is 7:01 PM and we are assembled here in the Commissioners' Boardroom of City Hall. Anybody who has just very recently come in, we have additional agendas on the table in the back there, on your left, my, you know, your right, my left, if you need them. So please help yourself. If anybody has an electronic devices or cellphones, please mute them or turn them off at this time. We would appreciate that. And I would like to go ahead and invite Bishop Philip J., J., Philip, that's a cornerstone Christian Community Church, to open our meeting in prayer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me bow ahead for a moment. Eternal God, we thank you for your hand of mercy, as upon each of us, and your protection of grace on our lives. Teach each of us to number our days that we may apply our hearts into wisdom. We ask you, O God, to bless this body of elected officials and move each one to deliberate and decide with a strong sense of equality and commitment to the people they serve. Be their lead and be their guide. We pray for each one and their families. We pray for our attorney, our manager, and his staff, and their families. And we pray, O God, for each and every employee and their families. Be their lead and be their guide. We also ask that you would bless each and every citizen of our great city. May each one be valued and supported equally regardless of race or wealth. Be their lead and be their guide. And finally, we pray for any and all persons that may be struggling during our governmental shutdown. The Psalmist writes, "The Lord is a refuge for the victimized and a stronghold in time of trouble." Be our lead and be our guide. In your strong and mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Bishop. This time Commissioner Pepfield.
Put our rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we'll consider adjustments to and approval of the agenda. I do not see that there are any additions or anything that are seats to be added or changed with the agenda. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Woodliffe to approve the agenda as written. Any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. The agenda stands adopted. And I realize that I forgot, normally I open the meeting with reading one of our mission, vision, or core values, and I'm going to read our mission statement, which is, "The mission of the City of Oxford is to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. In order to provide for our highest standards of behavior and transparency and governance, our Board of Commissioners has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct, among those that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to matters before the board tonight. If any board member does know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time."
Ms. Sargent, item seven on the agenda. I'll be excusing myself.
Oh, God. Is he hurting?
Okay, let's make sure we're good straight there.
Get him up.
Is that a problem you were seeing? Oh dear. Okay. We deeply apologize. Okay. Is he okay? Board members, okay to excuse Commissioner Woodliffe from voting on item seven?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, under delegations, I would like to invite Walter Hurst, the new executive of Families Living Violence Free, to come forward to the podium. And you do have handouts. Do you, do you want our folks, Mr. Hurst, do you want our folks to be able to look at their handouts while you're speaking or save them till later?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Sargent. I was gonna say Madam Mayor, but probably not a great idea. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Sargent, members of the Commission staff, folks. My name is Wally Hurst. I'm the new director of Families Living Violence Free in Oxford. We have, we have a great staff and we have great services that we provide to folks in, sometimes in their direst need. Some folks in those situations of domestic violence and sexual abuse feel so helpless. And one of the first things we need to make sure we, they know that there's somebody there for them, somebody in their corner. We offer counseling and intervention and advocacy, including safety planning, including we have a divorce clinic, we have all sorts of services that we offer. And of course, Commissioners, you have before you all the many services that we offer. There's also a fact sheet on the right-hand side that you'll probably want, I'll refer to just for a second or two. I don't want to take too much of the time tonight. I started in this job November nineteenth. After a lot of training, I'm finally competent to answer the phone. And I look forward to being trained better and better as the year goes on. I have deep roots in Oxford. My maternal grandmother is buried in Elmwood Cemetery. And I have a deep and abiding love for this place. I grew up in Warrenton, but I'm very, very happy to be here among you in Oxford. Anyway, that stat sheet on the right-hand side that you folks don't have access to because I didn't bring enough copies, shows that one in three women and one in four men will be victims of domestic abuse over the course of their lifetime. That is horrifying statistics, and I'll tell you, since 2003, we have lost 12 Granville County citizens to domestic violence, including one very young girl. And it is a tragedy. We lose somewhere between 40 and 80 persons per year just in North Carolina as victims of domestic abuse and domestic violence. It has to stop. It doesn't matter what race you are, how much your daddy makes, where you went to school, what neighborhood you live in. It doesn't make any difference. It happens everywhere. It happens in schools, in churches. It's stunning, the range and breadth of this, of this domestic terrorism, as I call it. We're here in order to provide support and make those victims survivors, make those victims competent, make those victims as whole as they can be and ready to start their lives over again. We obviously work with city and county agencies. We also work with federal agencies and we, and I plan to be a very, very great advocate for our people, the work we do, and most importantly, for our victims. We have a great deal of services. They are all free and confidential. I imagine there are some folks here who know people who need to take advantage of our services. It is completely confidential. It is completely free. We help with a whole lot of things, and I think it's God's work. And I think it's a chance to make a difference in this world. And we try to make a difference every single day. I have an incredibly wonderful staff who does, who does incredible work, and I'm really proud to be a part of this organization. Commissioners, Madam Mayor, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. On the left-hand side of your packet, by the way, is very important stuff. You need to hand it out to your, to your employees, the packets, and of course, and of course, we're having hot dog day for all city and county employees next Thursday, the 24th. So not this Thursday, next Thursday. And that flyer is on there. Feel free to copy and give that to all the employees. We've had a law enforcement day already. I got a, I got a hot dog grill donated to us, one of those ones that you see in the stores and rolls around. So we, you know, gotta take advantage of that. So we invite anybody from the public who has an interest in volunteering. We'd love to have you. We'll train you. And you too can make a difference in the lives of these domestic abuse victims. It's important work, and I'm really, really honored to be, be able to do it. Any questions? Any comments? Anything, any questions you need to ask me? I can't answer everything because I'm not quite fully competent about this, but I have the statistics, and of course, now you do too.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What are your funding sources?
We get funding from Victims of Crime Act, Governor's Commission on Crime, National Council of Women, and whatever VIPSA is. I got many acronyms. I can't keep them all straight now. What's, what's, what's VIPSA?
I don't, I don't know if I can call it.
Victims of Crime Prevention. I don't know what it is. And we also get, get funding for our, we have hotlines in English and Spanish. We get funding from the Hispanic grantors and government for that, too. We exist also on, on private donations and grants. We would love to have, we're gonna have at least two major fundraisers this year, the Board Informs me, and some minor fundraisers as well. So be on the lookout for that, you guys. This is a good way, good organization to support. We, we do, we do good work, and I'm really, really honored to be a part of it. We do city, mostly state and federal funding, mostly state and federal funding, although we do get, and of course, we get donations all the time as well, donations in kind.
And the VIPSA is Family Violence Prevention and Services Program.
There you go.
And actually related to the shutdown, even though the people at the Council for Women in Raleigh are in business, federal money is not coming from them.
Correct. We have about, it's about 25% of our money is affected, is not affected by the government shutdown, but 75% is. We have a, we have a reserve and we, we're okay. Don't know, don't know how long that's gonna be lasting if we, if it's an extended shutdown. But we're, I, we do this because we love the work, obviously, and it's very much needed. So we just appreciate the idea. I go into court almost every day before, before District Court and say, "Hi, my name is Wally Hurst. I work for Families for Violence, Living Violence Free. We're here for you. We're free and confidential. If you need us, please call us and take a brochure if you want." We gotta get out there in the community, and all of y'all need to know that there's someplace that these folks can go. So if you know someplace, or if you want us to give training on this, be happy to do it. I told the board tonight, I need to get into every barber shop and hair salon in this county and teach, teach those folks how to, how to, how to recognize these things. Because they need to know. Churches need to know. Pastors need to know. Librarians need to know. Whole lot of folks need to know how to recognize this stuff, because sometimes the signs are subtle. So anyway, thank you for having me. Any other questions?
Further questions? Yes, sir.
From the work you've done, have you seen statistics that show how your program has helped?
Yes. Well, I have, all I have is anecdotal so far.
Right.
I mean, we had, we had folks get their DVPO, which is Domestic Violence Protection Orders. Sorry to speak in acronyms. I hate when people do that. We had, we had two folks get their Domestic Violence Protection Orders today. We had, we just relocated somebody that was here and didn't think she had a chance to break away from her, her domestic violence situation. She's now living in Pennsylvania with her sister, and there's no way the abuser can find her. We have, we have, we have success stories, and of course, we also have challenges and frustrations, as you well know, when the victims go back to their abusers or don't show up because of intimidation or whatever. And it's really, it's, it's, it's terribly frustrating at times, but we take our victories where we can. And I, I try, I'm gonna try to get every person who goes through that court system to make sure they know about us, and we, they have us available to them. I mean, I can't, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping more folks know about us, and the more folks that know about us, folks like you folks, folks like these folks up here at the dais, the more folks that know about us and have this information available to them, the more people we can help. And that's what we're here for. We're here for our victims. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurst.
Mayor, where is he located at?
Oxford Outer Loop Road. You know where the old Tobacco Research is? You know that, that farm that where the?
Cooperative extension is on.
Farm extension is? That two-story building over there on Oxford Loop?
Pharmacy chain?
Uh-uh. Right down from the DMV. Right over from the DMV.
Oh, okay. Let me have your brochure, please. Thank you, dear.
Go ahead and get it to me.
I will. I know she knows the information, sir.
Right.
Like I said, if y'all need a, need brochures, I would have brought a hundred if I didn't know who the Commissioner is.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Okay. With that, we move forward to the public comment portion of our agenda. And we have a number of people signed up today, so I'm going to limit, let me see. We're gonna limit comments to three and a half minutes. And it is my request that you do your very best to stay within that. We will give you a little warning when you've got a minute left. I'll put up my finger so that you know, because I will cut you off at the end of the three and a half minutes. With that, I'd like to invite Dr. Talokonamakunde to come forward and identify your address and your purpose for being here.
I'm Chaplain Talokonamakunde. I live at 121 Halifax Street, Oxford, North Carolina. I'm Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Over 12 years, I have served as Chaplain for Oxford Police Department, Granville County Sheriff's Office, Stowe Fire Department, and Granville Medical Center. As a member of the International Conference of Police Chaplains, I carry the rank as Senior Chaplain. As a member of North Carolina Insurance Chaplain Association, I carry the rank of Master Chaplain and Instructor. I'm also certified to do critical incident stress management. I was at a recent conference, and the salary of the Nashville, Tennessee Chaplain was a mere $55,000 a year. The Chaplain for the Charleston, South Carolina Police Department is a mere $70,000. I had them all beat. I made six figures. Zero, 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 zero. But I still have them beat. I was on the selection team for the Oxford Police Chief at the last time we selected a chief, and Al Coley was the best for Oxford, as I saw it, doing my duty as a member of that committee. It seems like there's open season on law enforcement. Increasing suicide rate is going up. The divorce rate is going up. And this week, I've been in contact with Sergeant Eckert and Chaplain Anderson of the Raleigh Police Department, and I'll be helping them with debriefing and counseling. Last night, State Trooper shot in Wilson, North Carolina. We don't expect open season to come from these chambers. I'll say that again. We don't expect the open season on the police department to come from, in this house. When the chief calls me to make a death notification at 1:00 in the morning, I expect support from our elected officials for all of our first responders. When I got to tell the mother that her son got killed on Martin Luther King Drive, and then go to Henderson to tell the grandmother, and then find the father, I expect that this chamber will give us all the support we need to be able to do those things. My church, Timothy Darling Presbyterian Church, voted by the session for me to serve as part of this, as part of my service at the church. I invite you to get on board with what, with what your police department is doing. I invite you to get on board with what they were doing. For over 12 years, I have trained, 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 trained to be able to answer the call, to be God's presence at every scene of the police department. I've seen what people go through. The phase that I like most in closing is when somebody says, "Well, I pay your salary" to a police officer. I say, "Officer, may I speak?" And they say, "No, Chaplain, because we know what you're gonna say. You're gonna tell the person you're the worst employee that you can possibly be. You don't pay them enough. You don't pay their insurance enough. And why say you pay their salary?" I would never claim I paid the salary to a police officer here in this town because they don't get a whole lot. So I say to you, let's work together with our, the police department. Let's work together with our police department. One of the things I found out is I get excited when I'm riding around sometimes with officers on a ride-along, and I teach ride-along, is that they take more stuff than I would take. Amen.
I don't know how to stop that. Thank you very much. Next, I invite Michael Mohammed to come forward. Mr. Mohammed, please state your name and address for the record and the topic about which you would like to speak.
My name is Michael Mohammed. I'm the chairman for the Granville County Local Organizer Committee. I'm speaking in collaboration with the NAACP in Granville County. I live on 10111 Avenue. I'm talking about code of ethics. The mayor has, according to the mayor, there's a Board of Commissioners that approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for board members. And while this administration continues to tout core values, but I respectfully suggest board members' conduct oftentimes run contrary to those ethical standards, dignity, courtesy, and respect. In reference to November 13 city council meeting, we saw a breach of those values right here in this room, where clear violation of all the rules were done by a board member. And now, there's nothing wrong with a board member questioning a department head, but there is something terribly wrong when it isn't done in a manner that is in violation of policy, laced with racial connotations, kind of a slave-master type slave exchange, demanding answers to yes-and-no questions for the purposes of humiliation. And to make matters worse, the mayor and mayor pro temp attempted to break, bring some order, but that particular board member was unyielding, very disrespectful. So what are the penalties for a citizen that does that? And what is the penalty for a board member that does it as well? So on December 5th, we did send this board a letter expressing concerns about this type of conduct. We haven't heard anything from the mayor, city, the attorney, or the manager. We realize that North Carolina general statute does not, it only gives the city manager authority to deal with those who are not elected by the people. However, there are inherent powers that are governed in North Carolina law, common law, that gives this board the power, inherent powers, but they can remove a board member for that type of conduct. And so we want a response, written response from this board, as we give you a written complaint. We want a written response about what this board is gonna do in the future about these particular events. I thank you for your, your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mohammed. Okay. Next, I'll invite John Tovey to come forward. And Mr. Tovey, please state your name, your address, and your purpose for coming before the board tonight.
My name is John Tovey. I live at 114 Saddle Tree Road, Oxford. And I want to talk about the insurance. I mean, it's a red-hot topic at the moment. I don't agree with it. I think most people know that. I don't agree with it. But a point I wanted to make before the board goes to vote tonight was, it was mentioned at a previous meeting about some legality as regards giving the insurance to two people or withdrawing their insurance, and there might be a legal problem. My take on it is, it was a policy decision that gave them this insurance, so shouldn't it be a policy decision to take it away? It's as easy as that. As far as I can see, I might be wrong. I'm pretty naive. But that's my, that's my take on it. I don't think elected officials should have it unless all the, all the employees of the city had this insurance. I mean, it's important to them, it's important to everybody, everybody else. And I don't think you can give one without giving to everybody that qualifies. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tovey. Next, I will invite Larry Thomas to come forward to the dais. Mr. Thomas, please state your address and your purpose for being here tonight, for the purpose of the record.
Larry Thomas, 207 East Front Street, and I'm here to make some comments on a few agenda items. I was at a recent Public Works Committee meeting where electronic advertisement was discussed, and I was concerned that electric bids would replace print ads. Local papers, as you are well aware, play an important role in our community. I do not know how much of their revenue comes from ads for bidding, but I do know it is a very minor cost to the city. I would like to see the city require all ads for bidding be run into local paper. Also, at the Public Works Committee meeting, they were discussing the $1,500,000 change order that's on the agenda. I just want to remind you that that's a 28% increase over the original bid. That's a fairly significant number, I think. We're also going to vote on tonight a $350,000 construction administration order that springs your total for engineering services that you have acted on, that I'm aware of, to a little over $2,300,000 in the past 10 months. That's a big number. I also assume that there will be a task order for engineering services for this $1,500,000 change order, and I'm sure that there was some engineering services involved with obtaining this low-interest loan. I also got the impression at the Public Works Committee meeting that the city is not going to stop spending on water and sewer projects until the local government commission puts a stop to the amount of money you can borrow. I think this is a very unwise fiscal policy, if that's what you're gonna do. I'm also concerned that your CIP, your capital improvements project, is funded by rate increases for the next 20 to 25 years. And apparently, from what was discussed at the meeting, there is an anticipated larger jump sometime in the next three to five years. In closing, I see that your staff has advertised for on-call engineering firms. I would hope that any firm that missed their engineering estimate by 28% would not be considered. Before you talk.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. I think I would like to make, am I correct, that the 1.5 million change order is directly related to an increased allocation of money that is so related to that item? We were notified of an opportunity to receive additional funding, and so the change order is actually not due to a miscalculation, but the opportunity to gain an additional 1.5 million in funding and add additional streets that we had to cut from the original project.
Yeah, you, they were in the original bid, they were taken out, then you obtained another low-interest loan to put them back in.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, I just think that it's a fool, just spend some additional money that you had decided not to spend, but, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I would like to ask Joan Roberson to come forward and, to the podium, and please state your name, your address, and the purpose of your being here tonight.
Joan Roberson, 119 West Front Street. I'm here to talk about the insurance. Commissioners and citizens have fought the health insurance policy for elected officials since 1989 to no avail. The history shows a trail of corruption in Oxford city government for almost 30 years. The actions for self-gain were illegal, unethical, and/or highly questionable. In 1989, the board didn't follow state statutes, thereby breaking their oath of office. In 1989, the board didn't follow state statutes, thereby breaking their oath of office. 1997-98, the board didn't follow its own policy, allowing two commissioners to receive vision and dental coverage before it was included in their own policy. In 1998, Mr. Ellington was not age-qualified to receive the benefit. He was 51, not 55. Basic integrity should tell you to rescind this policy for all elected officials. The unless clause in the City Manager Heeman's letter to Ellington in 2013, which suspended his coverage, shows you have no further obligation to reinstate his policy. The letter says, "We will reinstate your health insurance unless, at the time of your release, the City of Oxford does not provide retiree health insurance to former elected officials that are currently receiving this benefit. There is no former elected official currently receiving this benefit, and the city no longer provides a retiree health insurance program for elected officials." I talked with Julie Hall from the League of Municipalities and was told that once a city official is no longer in office, their health plan can be coburned for 18 months if the official pays his own premiums at a 2% higher rate. Unless they were employed by the city and retired through the city retirement plan, they would not be able to continue their benefit. This is what says, "You can't do this." Does this board want to ignore the opposition, the history of impropriety, and even the laws for the personal gain of two people? I hope all of you will weigh your vote carefully. It will certainly tell this community more about who you all are.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robertson. I now invite Jay Kozie to come forward to the podium, and when you do so, please state your name, your address, and the purpose for being here, speaking tonight.
Jay Kozie, 210 North Country Club Drive, Oxford. I'm a man of short words. John Tovey, you took everything out of my mouth.
I knew that.
So, basically, what I can say is, the insurance, it's a bad decision. And I sure hope that you guys will vote no on this, because, you know, we voted you in, we can vote you out.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kozie. At this time, I'd like to invite Don Jenkins to come forward to the podium. Mr. Jenkins, please state your name, your address, and your purpose for being here to speak tonight.
My name is Don Jenkins. I'm at 105 Planters Place in beautiful Oxford. Be assured that it gives me no pleasure to say the things that I'm going to say. I worked for this organization for a little over seven years. I retired from here about 10 years, no, 10 years ago this month. I had a total of 48 years in business before I did my own business. I worked for Burlington Industries for 20, a little over 20 years. I was plant manager of a furniture company in Henderson for four years. HR for this hospital for eight years, retired, hated retirement, and worked for this organization as HR for seven years. I've since done HR consulting. I've since done leadership training and executive coaching. References are available. From this experience, I've made some conclusions. And the conclusions sadly are that this is an organization of low trust. And low trust typically is handed down by leadership, and sadly, and this is why it gives me no pleasure, I have seen it personally, and I have seen it as late as the newspaper that came out and that I saw today. Trust erodes when people talk about fellow employers and talk about fellow commissioners among themselves. Trust erodes when issues are not resolved as they should be in this session, but rather have to go to the newspaper, which simply does no good. And trust erodes when commissioners vote themselves emoluments and benefits that simply are just wrong. The cost, if you're gonna consider cost, is not the cost of the premiums alone, but it's the cost of the actuarial data that you're simply unable, I guess, to quantify. And why would you then vote for something if you do not know the actual cost? Be assured that the actuarial cost, because of what's happened with these, with this, these people on the plan, have caused across the whole hundred-plus employees to increase. This can be overturned. Interestingly enough, I would predict that if this passes, that in two years, it's gonna be taken up again, and it's gonna be taken up by a bunch of different folks, because I don't see anybody voting for any one who votes for this very sad benefit and emolument. The ground that I listen to, the people that I listen to, says, "I'll never vote for anybody who votes for this benefit now." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins. I now invite Debbie Ramsey to come forward to the podium. Please state your name, your address, and your purpose for being here tonight.
Debbie Ramsey, 107 Meadow Heights, Oxford, North Carolina. Before I start, I'd like to ask Mr. Harris to refrain from pounding on the bench to distract the speakers. The mayor holds a gavel. In December, Mr. Burnett stated this issue continued to come up, the insurance issue. In fact, he's right. It has, with opposition every time. In 2006, a concerned citizen spoke on this issue. He stated, "Numerous citizens in Oxford do not have any health insurance because they cannot afford it. Allowing elected officials to get free health insurance is wrong. For it to be an incentive to run for office is ludicrous, and commissioners are paid $5,200 a year. It should be an honor to serve as a commissioner, and anyone who does it for benefits is in it for the wrong reason. The board should do the right thing by eliminating free health insurance for retired elected city officials." Mind you, neither of the two retired. They were all voted out of office. Now, I would like to ask that concerned citizen, Mr. Strickland, has anything changed?
No, I'm still concerned.
At the December meeting, Mr. Burnett stated these men were vested. Vesting occurs when you contribute to a retirement plan. These men never contributed a dime to the city's retirement plan. At the December agenda meeting, Mr. Burnett advised the board that Ellington and Woodlift could sue if the board didn't reinstate the policies. Fear-mongering could be construed as an attempt to influence a vote. If Ellington and Woodlift choose to sue the very people who gave them the honor and privilege of serving, then I say, "Have at it." Citizens will always have commissioners' back if you do the right thing. One courageous commissioner should follow the suggestion by Mr. Strickland in 2006. Make a motion to eliminate health insurance for elected officials once and for all. Do the right thing. Only a coward will abstain.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ramsey. And lastly, I invite Phil Pope to come forward to the podium. And again, please state your name and your address and the purpose for your being here to speak tonight.
Phil Pope, 213 College Street. I'm here to speak about the insurance. But before I do that, I'd like to recognize the police department for cleaning up College Street on Sunday morning when there was a blockage that had water standing almost all the way across the road. You had two policemen out there with shovels digging out the drain line so that traffic could pass. I'd also like to thank the city for its prompt answering of my freedom of information request that I submitted last month. I am very excited about the archiving function you have in the city to make sure that records are properly recorded and shared when necessary. I've reviewed the minutes from the meetings that go back to '89 about this topic that we're talking about tonight. I think that those previous boards made poor decisions in voting in favor of that policy. I don't know what type of back-room conversations were had before the votes, but as we know today, the same thing goes on before we have votes, even as we're entering into 2019. Throughout this whole hubbub, I've not heard anyone on the board say that my constituents are telling me, "We want you to do this." I have heard board members over and over again say, "My constituents have questions about this, that, and the other." I can tell you, as someone stated earlier, Mr. Jenkins, the people I talked to have no interest in this policy going forward. Bad decisions that were made by previous boards can be corrected by this board. And I submit to you that if this board is here to represent the taxpayers of Oxford, you will vote no on extending this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our public comment period. I will ask, since there are a large number of people in the audience, those of you that support giving health insurance to the two remaining elected officials, please stand. Those of you that oppose giving health insurance to the two elected officials in question or please stand. Thank you very much.
Mayor, we have an issue. We can usually get a stand-up event or whatever.
We did it on the brunch bill for exactly the same purpose, is to get a sense of who was in the audience. That is actually why I did it. We move forward to, there are no public hearings at this time, so we move forward to old business, which Item 6 is to consider the annual review and signing of the Code of Ethics for the Board of Commissioners. In 2011, we amended the city ordinance, which is 2-461, in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 168-86, and renamed it the Code of Ethics. Our board recommended that the signature of each board member on a yearly basis reaffirm our commitment to this agreement at the beginning of each calendar year, and the document was distributed electronically to all board members last week to give everyone time to review it. And then, we have a signature sheet. I think several board members passed them in already, but if anybody has their signature sheet ready to be signed and passed in, please do so now. All right. Then, we move forward to Item 7, which is to consider the issue regarding insurance benefits for retired elected officials. On July 17th, 1989, the Board of Commissioners voted to provide health insurance to retired elected officials that had served 15 years and that had reached age 55 or older. This policy was amended on November 11th, 1997, that changed the age limit to 65. On January 10th, 2006, another change was made, this time to the number of years served from 15 to 20. This policy, and in 2008, I don't think it's in here, the policy was amended to discontinue it for all board members, with the exception of Commissioner Woodlift and the former mayor, Ally Ellington. And at the request from the board for continuation of this policy for the two individuals that are eligible, current Commissioner Al Woodlift and former mayor, Ally Ellington, and you have a staff report in Attachment 7 with no recommendation. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mayor, at our agenda meeting, I asked for someone representative of the league to come to our meeting, stand at the podium, answer our questions and the community questions. We heard back from this person this afternoon, Kamala Lee Hibbard, General Counsel of the League, sent a letter. And actually, the letter's a lot, it's a little in disagreement with what Ms. Robertson said. She heard me. So, that being said, I still desire for someone from the league to come, give us answers. We can get direct answers. We can ask questions. You can ask questions. One thing I don't like about the letter, she says that she did this as quickly as she could for the January meeting, and it was to consider whether the policy adopted in 1997 was illegal. Well, it wasn't adopted in 1997, it was 1989. So, I'm not real pleased with the letter we received. And I said at the meeting, if she, if they couldn't be here, we could do it in February. I would like to...
No, please.
I've got the floor. They don't.
Yes, absolutely. Please.
I would like someone to stand there and tell me what's legal, what's not. This letter says, "If you got insurance, you consider vesting." But there are things in this letter, and this is, you can get a copy of it, City Hall tomorrow, and you can read it yourself. It's not, it came to everybody on this board. Everybody got a copy. I would like to get someone, people from the league who've been here before, to advise us. I see nothing wrong with asking them. That's their job. That's what they're paid for. Our insurance is through them. Let them tell us what can, what we are obligated to do.
So, are you proposing at this time to table?
I would like to put it off until we can get someone to give us information. Yes.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Curran to attempt further communication with the league to see if we can get somebody to come here to City Hall. I presume during our next regular board meeting, so that will be a month.
This, there's no rush to decide on this. This is not a delay tactic. What's wrong with getting the right information? What's wrong with asking their legal counsel what's right, what we're obligated to do? It says in this letter, there could be litigation.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes. Please, let's, for the purposes of order, we had public comment. Everybody knows I love debate and discussion as much as every, anyone, but right now, this is for discussion among the board, and we'd love to have you listen. Commissioner Strickland.
I was just asking you to call for order.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Protem.
It says, "A request has come from the board for continuation." Who does the request come from?
Uh, we're, oh. I think perhaps, was it continuation? Commissioner Woodliffe brought it up, but I think he just brought it up to have it considered.
But was it a formal request? Because he currently serves as one of the... And also, it needs to be a correction. There is actually three people eligible, not just two.
Can you speak up, please?
Nope. There's actually three people eligible, not two. And that needs to be corrected. There's three people eligible, not two. And also, I just want to know who the request came from. Was it in writing? Because while we're debating something that's not, to me, that's...
He requested in an agenda meeting.
Oh, I understand that. I understand.
Commissioner Woodliffe requested that it be added.
Has the former mayor requested the insurance? Is he released or what?
I got a letter from him.
Okay. Have you gotten a letter from him?
I think most of the board members received a letter several months ago.
The last year.
Late summer, late summer.
I didn't. I didn't.
So can I, can I answer one thing that Mayor Protem has raised? In the minutes, Commissioner Herring is, or former Commissioner Herring is eligible, is that the third person to whom you're referring?
And he declined.
Right. But in the minutes of the two thousand and eight meeting, it very clearly states that the motion was to discontinue it for everyone with the exception of one person who was, who was currently receiving it, which would have been former mayor, Ally Ellington, and was currently eligible, which was, at that time, Mayor Woodliffe. And I can only infer, but I don't know, that Commissioner Herring or Mayor Protem, at that time, may perhaps had not attained eligibility by the number of years served. So that is what was pulled from the minutes. And where is our HR director? Let me see. Oh. Am I getting that correct, Mr. Askew? Okay. So, okay. Commissioner Fields.
I was just gonna say that we did, we did ask for someone to come and sort of clarify what, what we could do. But in all honesty, I believe that people's minds are made up. And whether or not someone come and stand physically and answer questions, they're gonna vote their way. My thing is, I'm elected. I'm elected. I'm not hired. And unless I'm mistaken, I don't think any of our mayors or commissioners were hired employees. Someone, please differentiate to me the difference between those two entities, an hired person and elected person. I was elected by choice, by choice. My choice to run, the citizens' choice to vote. A hired person, an employee, is hired by a committee of people that have been given certain facts, factual information about that person. So I, 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 no, if anybody can give me the narrative as to where those two entities are, then I can see some sense in it. But right now, me personally, I'm gonna say it today. I'm gonna say it in February, March, April, and May. I can see no justification for it because they were elected. Elected, not hired.
Mayor, how about reading? How about reading this question? Read, read that with the board authorized to adopt a policy, and then read the answer.
Okay, let me, let me find...
I won't, I won't give them that. I'm not fighting for this. I'm, I'm trying to get through the truth, to the bottom.
Okay.
That bothers everybody.
So do you, I have, Mayor Pro, you have a section, Mayor Protem would like the entire letter read? Okay. We're gonna read the letter.
Now, mind you, these are the same people that a certain person spoke with.
No, this is not...
No, yes it is. Because when she said she spoke with someone at the League, so this is the, it's the same...
So it's the same organization.
Right.
Okay. So this is a commentary from...
And this one's on paper.
From General Counsel Kimberly S. Hibbard at the North Carolina League of Municipalities. This is in response to your recent request for an opinion on issues related to retired elected officials participating in the City of Oxford's health plan. It is my understanding that the Board of Commissioners has asked, one, whether the policy adopted in nineteen ninety-seven that requires the city to fund health premiums for certain former elected officials was lawfully adopted. And two, if so, whether the city may cease funding the health premiums for a former elected official who qualified under the nineteen ninety-seven policy. These are complex matters that do not lend themselves to easy answers. However, I will attempt to respond as best I can in an effort to get this to you quickly for the January meeting. The letter is dated today. One, was the board authorized to adopt a policy granting elected officials with fifteen years of service the ability to participate in the city's group health plan at the city's expense after their retirement from service? General Statute one sixty-eight dash sixty-four provides that a city council may fix its own compensation and the compensation of the mayor and any other elected officials for the city by adoption of the annual budget ordinance. The term "compensation" is broad and arguably encompasses not just monetary payments, but also any benefits, such as insurance, that might be made available to the officials as part of an overall compensation package. In my opinion, that statute authorized the board to grant insurance benefits to elected officials who met the city's service criteria. This is not to say that I disagree or agree with the decision from a financial or public policy standpoint, just that I believe the action taken was likely within the legal authority of the board. You might recall that in recent years, there was an Attorney General's opinion and legislative activity regarding retired county elected officials participating in county health plans. The issue for counties hinged on language unique to the county statutes, and I do not believe that analysis is pertinent here. Two, made the city cease funding the premiums for a former elected official who became eligible under the original nineteen ninety-seven policy. This is certainly the more difficult issue. It is my understanding that the individual in question qualified for the benefit upon leaving elected office in nineteen ninety-seven and received it for some time, with the benefit suspended only during recent years when he was incarcerated in federal prison. The board has questioned whether the city must begin paying the benefit again upon his impending release. While it makes payment of the benefit more unpleasant for the city, the fact that the former official has been convicted of and served time for a serious felony does not affect my reasoning. I am not aware of any state law that would cause a forfeiture of the municipal benefit upon felony conviction. There are, of course, such laws with regard to the state and local retirement systems tied to a conviction of felonies involving financial impropriety. Rather, I think this question essentially revolves around contract principles and principles of vesting. If the benefit was a form of compensation as discussed above and was deferred upon qualification under the policy, there are legal issues that may come into play with unilateral repeal with regard to someone who had already become eligible. I would anticipate that the former official would argue that he had a contractual right to the retiree health benefit since he had vested, met the conditions by serving at least fifteen years, and had, in fact, already been receiving it. In a potentially analogous area, North Carolina courts have found that retirement pension benefits are contractual in nature and are not subject to unilateral change once the retiree has vested. C. Bailey versus State of North Carolina, three forty-eight, North Carolina, one thirty, in nineteen ninety-eight. Simpson versus North Carolina Local Government Employees Retirement System, eighty-eight, North Carolina, App. two eighteen, in nineteen eighty-seven. Affirmed Procureum three twenty-three, North Carolina, three sixty-two, also in nineteen eighty-eight. Falkenberry versus Teachers and State Employment Retirement System of North Carolina, three forty-five, North Carolina, six eighty-three, in nineteen ninety-seven. It is not entirely clear whether the same result would be reached as to other types of benefits, such as health coverage. Currently, the class action of Lake versus North Carolina State Health Plan is making its way through the appellate system. In that case, retirees are challenging the state's ability to alter the state health plan from the eighty-twenty premium free plan to the seventy-thirty plan. The trial court ruled in favor of the retirees entering a declaratory judgment that the retiree health benefits are contractual and part of deferred compensation, that the state breached and impaired the contract. The class members were entitled to the eighty-twenty plan, and the state's actions were an unconstitutional taking of the plaintiff's property. The plaintiffs argued that the retiree health benefits are deferred compensation and are governed by the retirement cases previously cited. Plaintiffs had vested, and therefore, the benefits could not be unilaterally reduced. Oral arguments were held before the North Carolina Court of Appeals in November of two thousand and eighteen. It will be interesting to see if the case sheds further light on the issue. Ultimately, I think it comes down to the board's willingness to risk litigation. We have a sense of the arguments that would be made, but simply do not have a definitive answer on how the courts would view the city's obligation under your fact scenario. I'm sorry that I can't be more definitive, but I hope this is at least somewhat helpful. I would like to add one comment to that, which is that it does seem to me, everything that she cited was with respect to employees. And North Carolina General Statute one twenty-eight dash twenty-one, "Employee shall mean any person who is regularly employed in the service of and whose salary or compensation is paid by the employer is defined in subdivision eleven of this section, whether employed or appointed for stated terms or otherwise, except teachers in the public schools, and except such employees who hold office by popular election as are not required to devote a major portion of their time to the duties of their office." And that is very clearly, the case is made in a following paragraph in the general statutes, where they say, "Under definition set forth in North Carolina General Statutes, as I said, one twenty-eight dash twenty-one, paragraph ten, which I read from, and the same applying to the North Carolina AC two C dot zero eight zero two, the only instance in which a retired county commissioner or city council member is eligible to participate in a retirement system is when he also has the duties of an employee because he is the county or city manager." And so I only make the point, and again, I, this goes to what Commissioner Curran is saying, is while there are many points made in the letter, there are still, I think, many questions. And for me, the question is, the, the case law that stands is related to people who are employed, as Commissioner Field said, we are elected, we are not hired. And can one say that that state law applies when the definition under the general statutes clearly states that elected officials are not employees? That is my comment. So Commissioner Curran did make a motion to, to delay until we have an opportunity to see if we can get somebody from the League to actually come here and answer both board and citizen questions. Are there further comments on that motion?
The only thing I'd like to say is, and I've read an email we received when this went back to nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-nine, that started. And there are a lot of questions to be asked about it. I don't know that this lady went back that far. She, she went back to nineteen ninety-seven. So I, I don't know, I, I don't agree with her letter. You know, and I don't disagree with Ms. Field, but it, we, I'm, I'm, she says we're subject to litigation. I think we need to look at that before and get some answers before we make a decision.
And there are further comments on Commissioner Curran's motion from this end?
No, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I've read the letter. There seems to be a distinction between insurance and health insurance. There seems to be conflict relative to cases that have reviewed this issue. I mean, she talks about a case that's, we simply had oral arguments in November that talked about benefits. It's more change of benefits as opposed to denying benefits. I mean, it talks about, you know, the eighty-twenty program versus the seventy-thirty program. And I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out what somebody could say from that podium that would, you know, help me to understand the fairness of two individuals out of the whole city receiving these benefits. And it's not provided to our city employees. Just not sure what I could hear. What could they say?
Commissioner Strickland, did you have a further comment?
Well, I think that you look back at the minutes I sent, that when you go to the League of Municipalities or the School of Government, they will come back and give you all this verbiage, but then they're gonna say what is said right here in the last paragraph. It's up to the board where you wanna risk litigation or not. And personally, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I do know that in what we call transparency, we've asked people to come from the League to answer questions on at least four occasions. And the amazing thing about it, they were all from the Police Department. So as far as, as far as Commissioner Curran's request, I don't, I don't have any problem with having an actual person stand up there to clarify points, because she's talking about, in this letter, she's talking about the Bailey Act. And I received quite a bit of back pay because I paid taxes when I wasn't supposed to be paying to the state of North Carolina. Thank you, Lord. You came at a good time. But, I mean, it's like oranges and apples. I know that Commissioner Woodliffe, he was aware that when he went and ran for reelection, and I told him personally, "Al, you know if you're elected, you're gonna have to give it up." He acknowledged that. And I don't know if he's gonna, if he don't get reelected, I don't know if he's gonna apply for it. I don't know. And as far as Mr. Ellington, I've never received any requests from him. And my name was mentioned, you know, about the minutes. I was dead set against it. I wasn't even a commissioner, and I've never voted on, on this issue before. And so it comes down to being a legal issue. I have no idea if either one of them would seek litigation or try to sue the city. I don't, I don't think so, because I, I've learned over the years, you can't fight City Hall. It's just a matter of fact, you can't fight City Hall. And I think this board is honorable. We all have our different opinions and different approaches to solving things. But I've, I've never been involved in any action since I've been on this board that was illegal or immoral. And I've voted against a couple of things that I consider to be right in my mind, the broad spiel, for instance. I was the only one that voted against that, because I didn't think... I was the only one that voted against that because I didn't think that it would benefit all of the merchants in, in the city of Oxford. It only benefited a couple of people, and I don't see where there's been any great influx of people coming to Oxford just to have a Bloody Mary with breakfast at ten o'clock instead of twelve. So, you know, we have to, we have to look at the big picture here. I'll give you another example. When I was chairman of the Personnel Committee, I told the Human Resources Officer that we needed to stop paying for the former mayor's insurance because he was in federal custody. And her response was, oh, no, he's in Mecklenburg County Jail. It didn't matter which jail. Federal prisoners are housed in local facilities a lot of times. We used to house them here, but they were still federal prisoners and still came under the health care of those because you, you can see people coming from, but if you ever go to hospital, they got people in custody over there. So this is not an easy, easy thing to do. And I want to get it right because I don't want to go down as having, as having, committing an illegal act that it looks like in the past, there was a possibility it was, for, and I don't, I don't want any health insurance. I don't know, but I don't see any reason why you can't have a person come down here and open it up to the audience and let them ask questions. But I don't think anybody on this board, was on this board when any of these acts are taking place, except Commissioner Woodlock. And, well, I just, I just don't want to do anything that's going to go down in my record. I don't have anything, anything. And I, I would say this, I don't care what kind of stand I take, if just one person would tell me that I'm wrong, I didn't give up my rights as a citizen when I became commissioner. I have a right to complain. And if I'm right, you dare them well believe that I'm not going to back off. And having said that, whatever the board decides here.
I have a further comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I think we always say let the manager do his job, and I think that's the issue in this case. There is already a policy in place that no elected official should receive the benefit unless they were already vested. So there's already a policy in place, so we're really up here talking about nothing to me. I honestly do not know what to do in this situation. The attorney tells us to do one thing. We hear from different people. A letter says one thing. I'm like Commissioner Strickland, I don't want to do anything wrong. I've not been to law school, but I have two attorneys telling me that they are supposed to get this insurance. So what are we talking about? The policy's already been changed, and we're not, you know.
So, right now, we have a motion on the table by Commissioner Kern to attempt again with a month's notice rather than a week's notice to see if we can get somebody from the league to come and hear and respond to questions. If there is no further question, I'm going to say, all in favor of Commissioner Kern's motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, we have Commissioner Strickland, Kern, Mayor Pro Tem, and Commissioner Bullock. So, all opposed to the motion to, for the purpose of the public to restate the motion to attempt again to get somebody from the league to be at the February meeting. I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but we're in the middle of a vote. All opposed to that, raise your right hand. And we have Commissioner Bridges and Commissioner Fields. And so, that motion to attempt to reconnect with the league and get their presence here at the February meeting to answer questions carries four to two.
And Madam Mayor, I might ask, if possible, can they request Robin Davis? She's the one that's been down here before.
She's not with the league.
She's not with the league anymore?
No, she's a private lawyer. She's, she's never worked for the league.
But they, they sent her down here.
They have, but not, not as a representative of the league.
It's legal counsel.
I know, but somebody has to pay her to come down here.
Well, the league is our risk management.
Man, I, I can find out. I don't mind doing that. She, she doesn't, she does not work for the league.
She knows her stuff.
If they can't be here in February, we vote in February. We've got, you know, we've, they've got a month to get here. Everybody else can be here, can come back.
That's, that's, that's a final fact.
Absolutely.
Whether or not a physical body can be in there.
If they can't get here with a month's notice, they don't want to come. I mean, they don't have a week's notice this time.
That's correct.
If nobody can get here, we're still going to vote finally in February.
If you come to that.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
The comment was, we're going to make a request for someone to come if they cannot be here. If they cannot come by February, topic will come in again and we'll vote.
Right, but they just the.
Well, I voted to continue it for two reasons. One, I have asked several questions, and I've not gotten a clear answer on any of them. Secondly, as I, as been pointed out by Ms. Robertson, I asked at one point, did we have a choice? The first answer I got indicated, no, but as we went back and looked at it, it was, well, based on what you want to do. And just too many open areas. I'm not, I, if I had to vote right now, I would, but I would like to know that I had all the information, as much as I could have, to make a decision of this magnitude.
Okay. With that, we pre.
You'll get your answer in November.
That's fine.
We appreciate everybody's coming, but we're going to move forward with our agenda. So, and thank you, Commissioner Bullock. With that, we go to new business. Item eight, resolution for one and a half million in additional funding for the 2017 water line replacement project, and I'm going to hand that off to Commissioner Bullock, who is Chair of the Public Works Committee.
As was stated earlier, these funds were made available, this, as was also stated, this was not due to a mistake by any engineering policy. When we got the original announced, we saw what streets we could work on as far as applying water. These funds became available, so some of the ones that we could not include initially, we can go back in and include, so. In this case, we want to pursue it, plan to pursue it, we have to pass a resolution approving the request for that. I put that in form of a motion.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt a resolution for the additional loan amount of up to one and a half million dollars to complete the water mains on 11th Streets that had to be removed from the original 2017 water main replacement project. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. For one thing, you know, it's funny, we just spent a million and a half dollars and half people got up and left. Learn about spending some money on insurance. I requested a while back the breakdown on the funding, the grants, the twenty-year loan, the forty-year loan. After three requests, I finally got it. I think everybody on the board got it. Twenty-year zero interest loan come to fifteen million, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, which will be an annual payback of seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Forty-year loan, which is one point four to either two percent interest, will come to an annual payback of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars plus interest. So together, once this is completed in two or three years, we will be paying, if my figures are right, now I'll ask the manager or HOD, about one point two million dollars plus whatever the interest is on the forty-year loan per year in paying back the loan. Last year, we added about one point two million to our fund balance in the water and sewer fund. With these figures, we will spend every penny we, every penny we make paying back these loans. We show no additional money should we have anything come up in the future, such as the water plant upgrade, the Collake Water System. As Mr. Thomas said, the LGC can regulate this, but they don't know what we need in the future. They'll, they'll agree that we can pay it back as long as we don't need anything else. On this, there's a one point five million on here, but I assume that's not what we're asking for here because that's, that's a twenty-year loan, isn't it? The one, the one point five million?
Yes, sir, and it's included on.
But it, it's interest-free? I thought it was low interest. It's low interest. So, that would be added to this figure also.
It's included in those numbers.
The one and a half, I think that you see is that one.
That is over here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I am concerned that we have, with this much money being obligated to pay back, we're putting ourselves in a very curious situation. If my figures are wrong, well, where's HOD? Are my figures not exact, are they close?
Should we look that in together and have thought that the conclusion was that?
HOD, can you stand up, please?
Yes. I'm not sure, we, we look that in together and, according to the schedule, that sort of payment, that was close.
Of the one point two million a year?
Yes.
For the next twenty, twenty years, while the twenty and the forty-year loans are combined, and then there's an additional continuation.
And once the twenty-year is paid, then it'll be roughly four hundred, well, four thirty-six plus interest for twenty more years.
Can I ask?
And the only way we would have more than that profit on our water sewer system would be through rate increases, which we're going to have a rate increase, but it'll just be to pay for the increase we get from the Collake Regional System. It won't make us any more money, so we'll have a rate increase there. Or adding customers. And we would have to add a lot of customers. This doesn't allow any money for any other, well, we, you'd have to take money from fund balance to, to any of the power work. And we will be taking a million from fund balance with what we have here on the city-funded match plus the three hundred and some thousand over here. Together, they back about a million that will come out of fund dollars. And it doesn't all come out at one time, but it does over a period of time. I'm concerned that it's cutting very close.
Do we have other questions or comments from members of the board?
I'm not disagreeing necessarily with Commissioner Kern, but this has already been approved.
To apply for the funds?
To accept it. This is, I hope we need to move to a different action. So be it, but I mean, we've approved doing it, this is just approved a resolution for
Okay.
What would we not do?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Fields?
I, 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 I understand what Commissioner Kern is saying. Don't put all your eggs in one basket.
Put more in our basket than, more, more eggs than we got.
More eggs than we got, but if, if, say, if we did not do this, where, where would we cut off at? Where would we cut off in our infrastructure? Where would we?
You got to draw the line somewhere.
You know, what neighborhood would we tell? We can't do your water or your sewer. I, I, hindsight is, is poor, but, because the history of Oxford, some of this work should have been done years ago. Should have been done years ago. And, and, and we're at the point now, with some of our streets and our sewer systems, we either, we either correct it now or end up with another cherished street. So where do we, where do we decide? Who do, where do we decide? And this, tonight, we're just accepting the resolution anyway, so. Am I correct? We're voting on the resolution.
I think we need to go back and take another look.
If we don't approve the resolution, then we're basically saying we don't want the money.
We don't want the money.
And Commissioner Kern started to say something.
I said, I think we need to go back and take a look at some of this stuff. I mean, yeah, there's some that we probably can't. I mean, if, if we're taking in one point one million and spending one point two, that doesn't work. And as I said, one point two is not the exact number because it's not figured out on the four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
And I would like to ask a question of our engineer, because the point, you make a lot of very good points. We also, Commissioner Fields has mentioned that, you know, we've had a lot of really old infrastructure that's been a problem, which all of this board knows. Do we have a sense of the amount of money that we spend currently out of the budget addressing leaks and all of the problems that are occurring on a regular basis because of our old infrastructure that needs replacing? Are we able to quantify that, or is it just kind of the money that we have in for maintenance and repair that we use?
That, that number at this point in time has not been quantified very well. We are walking towards being able to quantify those things better by, in relation to Level three one one, where we can track where our funds, you know, our, our staff is going, are they doing a Sure Hookup or are they doing a repair? And so those things, you know, historically have just been all captured under operation and maintenance.
All right. We're not repairing every street, every water line in Oxford. The repairs will continue. What percent are we repairing, replacing?
That's part of the Public Works Department. I, I don't track their exact numbers, but I do know.
Is it twenty-five percent a year?
Are you asking about repairing or replacing?
What, what we're replacing with this?
Okay. So how much are the current loans and grants addressing out of our infrastructure?
A rule of thumb would be about a million dollars to replace a mile of water or sewer line. The rule of thumb could be more, it could be less. We have approximately ninety miles each of water and sewer. So we're replacing out of that hundred and eighty miles of water and sewer, we're looking at replacing approximately forty miles.
So less than twenty-five percent. So we've still got, say, over seventy-five percent that can still leak. You're still going to have repairs. You're not stopping all of them.
If you remember, much of our pipe dates back to nineteen forty-seven. It's our new pipe, and our old pipe is nineteen oh five. And so the concern is that over a century, it has reached its end of useful life. And that while the repairs may not have a huge impact today, the impact is just going to increase exponentially in the future.
Look, I'm not disagreeing that they need repair. You know, I wish we could do all of them today, right now, but we can't. But I just don't think we need to do more than we can type of.
I guess my question would be, hasn't the engineer and city manager and others looked at these, these payouts and made? at these, these payouts and made the decision? Because it says recommended by staff. I, from that, that tells me that our city manager and the engineer and others have reviewed this and feel that it's necessary. You know, I, I just remember back when we were getting presentations about the conditions of our water lines and, and our sewage system, there were pipes that were almost like clay and they were deteriorating. And, you know, if you put new piping in, it puts pressure on the old piping. And so there's always going to be that process of repair and, and trying to make sure that our infrastructure is strong. You know, I, I'm thinking of my children and grandchildren. You know, what we do now is going to have a tremendous effect on our community going You know, that's why we hired this manager. I mean, you know, to make decisions about what the city can do and can't do. When we have a water break or we got water that's contaminated because of, you know, poor infrastructure, you know, that's going to be something worse than maybe spending a little extra money to make sure we're doing the right thing. And we, and I think we have, time and time again, congratulated our engineer for her great work in terms of evaluating what our infrastructure is looking like. And, and unless those pictures were untrue, I'm concerned about water I'm drinking if our pipes stay the way that they are.
Ms. Ratliff, I would like to ask you a question. I would like to first state that I appreciate Commissioner Kern's bringing this up. We are often align fiscally as being generally conservative and I, I would say that all the points mentioned are valid from Commissioner Bridges saying he's thinking about his children. And I think Commissioner Kern is thinking the same way with respect to debt repayment. So my, my question to you is the amount of money that the, this board has currently elected to spend on water and wastewater infrastructure projects, does it fit into the repayment schedule, the debt service schedule as understood by the Raftalas model that has been presented to the board? Or are we starting to create payments through the amount that we're being leveraged that are exceeding what was already in the repayment schedule?
The Raftalas water into a rate model does account for all of these projects?
Does account?
It does account. If you recall, in the April round of funding, we received 1.5 million in principal forgiveness, which the 1.5 million that we are now getting in loan is basically an offset because we got the equivalent of a grant principal forgiveness that we do not have to pay back. They turn around and offer us a loan for 1.5 million, the same amount that we received in principal forgiveness. And it is accounted for in the rate.
So that original one and a half million was not, was part of the debt service and it was part of a loan? And I don't know if this will help Commissioner Kern at all, knowing that it was all, and that was included as loan repayment in the Raftalas model. But then later, we learned that it was principal forgiveness. So in essence, by requesting the additional money that the, the state is making available to us, we are actually holding neutral. Am I getting that because of this, the principal, the, the principal forgiveness that was kind of a gift after the fact? I don't know if that helps, Commissioner.
Well, you know, I hate to say it, the 1.5 million is insignificant, really. I mean, what I'm getting at is the bottom line. And, and, and don't get me wrong, I've seen the pictures. I was at the retreat, I saw the cave in the water line, the sewer line. I'm not disagreeing with that. And as I said, I'd love to see every foot of it replaced. I don't, I don't add on a room at my home that's going to cost me more than I can pay back. And I'm afraid that's what we're getting to. Let me ask the manager, you tell me.
Is that what I can tell you?
Am I, am I that far off? Am I that wrong?
No, I think it's certainly a, a good welcome and healthy discussion to be had. And I applaud the board for its, its concern, making sure that we're fiscally responsible and healthy. We, we all want that. I will say that, expanding on some of Amy's comments, you are approximately $42 to $43 million into a, what I'm assuming, because as I came here, these conversations were taking place then, a $96 million 10-year capital improvement program. That's, that's what this Raftalas model and index of schedules basically tells you. All of the projects that the board has accepted funding for are part of this model, as well as the debt service schedule that is contained within the model and your ability to pay. If we continue on that course, you have the ability to pay if you continue to do what has been spelled out within this model. So this additional money that is coming in, it is almost an exchange. It is a way of looking at it and then making up for the, the grant or principal forgiveness, however you want to call it, name it, that was provided earlier. Is it time to review? Absolutely. It is time to review. The last time we had this conversation with Raftalas was approximately a year ago, I believe. And Amy and I have had this conversation more than once during the course of the last month or two about having Raftalas update this model to give not only she and I an enhanced comfort level, but to present that information again to the board. Because some of these things have shifted a little bit. And I say shifted, I want the board to understand that, you know, the, the debt schedule that you have in this model begins in 2016. We're going into fiscal year 1920. And a number of tar, of projects that were targeted initially, if the board understands the fact that we don't start paying anything back until at a minimum of six months after completion of the project. To my knowledge, I don't think we've completed the first project as far as formally completing a project that's been identified in the DIP that we've accepted state funds or federal funds for. We're still in the process. So there is some shifting going on there into the future. And at this time, we continue to take in revenue at a reasonable amount. Commissioner Kern mentioned the fact that last year, 17, 18, our net position increased by 1.182 million in our water and sewer fund. To date, our net increased, position has increased by $357,800 to date. And while that is behind last year, those numbers reflect the fact that we have begun paying out for contractors that we see currently around our city working on water tank or lying down Highway 15 and on Broad Street. We've started making some of those payments. So a number of that, much of that will be reimbursable through those grants and loans. And then it just gets into that debt schedule and how those payments are spread out. If you look into those debt schedules, and I, I don't think that we need to do all of that now because everybody doesn't have it. They are accounted for as well as our ability to pay for it currently and into the future if we do what is being recommended within this rate model. And knowing that the board has had these conversations with Raftalas, with Amy, with Hawk, even prior to my arrival, and the board understood that and was committed to making those improvements up until $96 million in projects, we're not halfway there yet. But I do think that it is very responsible, very healthy to check, to have those conversations, to review and to update. And we need to provide the board with an update of where the model lies. One of the needs that needs to be reflected within an updated Raftalas financial planning model and this index of schedules is what is going on at the Car Lake Regional Water System. I think we all understand what is going on there and what is being proposed. What is also being proposed at the system is that there be a change in the way billing is done from the way that it is being done currently. So the change in the billing is crucial to be included in this rate model. So what we are hoping to do is, once that decision is made, have this model updated, provide the board with the information and let you see every penny, where we are, where we stand, what's projected, what the debt schedules are as far as being adjusted with the projects that we have ongoing and those that will come online later. I recognize the fact that it is a departure from previous comfort levels. I understand that. And I'm incredibly fiscally conservative as well, so, you know, sometimes I get a little antsy about, you know, signing big checks and seeing fund balances decline. But my take on it is, at this point in time, that the board had approved, had approved a schedule of projects, a schedule of work. And that's what staff is attempting to carry forward. We want to do it fiscally responsible. We want to do it in, in a way that not only our citizens will be proud of, but they can continue to afford. And we are concerned about that as well. And that is something that also the rate model needs to be updated to reflect is what are, what are the anticipated needs of revenue coming in. And right now, the revenue is coming in as has been projected. Hopefully, we see some of the growth that we are encouraged in seeing as, as far as some of the projects that are under review and being proposed for the city of Oxford. That's going to help. There's no doubt about that. It's having more people, more customers helps us. But, you know, that growth doesn't come explosively unless you're Fuqua Arena or Apex or some of those others. It's going to come steadily. And that steady growth is what we need throughout the course of those 20 to 40-year obligations to meet those obligations. So am I comfortable with accepting the 1.5 million dollar additional? Yes, I am. I'm also comfortable at a reduction in pace. And Amy and I have had those conversations about trying to let some of the projects that we've approved and have funding for catch up before we pursue more.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. I appreciate that. And certainly regardless, Commissioner, about how you choose to vote tonight, it would seem clear that you're, you're bringing up the issue from your perspective is important and warrants whether, as the manager says, we have an update or whether we have a work session with Raftalas, whether in a public works committee meeting or maybe at an agenda meeting where everybody is together and has the opportunity to ask the questions so we can feel comfortable going forward. And as manager has discussed, maybe adjusting the pace, we can, we can have that further conversation. Commissioner Kern, do you have any further comments at this time?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. Does anybody else? All right. Then I will call the question, which is Commissioner Bullock's motion to approve the adopting a resolution for the additional loan amount of up to 1.5 million dollars from the Division of Water Infrastructure. This 1.5 million dollars in funding allows the city to complete the water mains on 11 streets that were removed from the project when it came in over budget due to the ongoing escalation of construction costs. And I will ask you to vote with your right hand. All in favor, please signal so with your right hand. And we have Commissioners Woodlock, Bullock, Fields, Bridges, Mayor Pro Tem, Harris and Commissioner Strickland, all opposed, raise your right hand. And we have Commissioner. So that passes 6 to 1. And I would like to say how much I appreciate the thoughtful discussion. Thank you very much. Item nine, consider adopting the revised 2016 Capital Improvement Plan. And Commissioner Bullock is Chair of the Public Works Committee. I'm going to invite you to present this item for the board and the public as well.
Well, as was mentioned, we did approve a 10-year capital improvement plan, but as we have proceeded, certain events have taken place. Some items have been moved up on the schedule, some other items have been, needed to be moved back. We've had some additional requests from the DOT. Certain water mains need to be replaced before they get into paving the streets. So basically what we're saying is adopting the plan is not adding anything to it, just acknowledging these changes that have been made and need to be made. But put that in form of motion.
Okay. We do have a motion from Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion there too?
So what we're moving down will offset what we're moving up.
Yes, is that correct?
Our engineer said yes.
There have been a couple minor additions that we have discovered are issues in it, but most of it is just a rearrangement of the projects that were on the road.
Okay.
How big addition?
Old Warehouse Square was one of them would be issued because of down 101, going down to Alabai and back in the, that area. Another one, I would say that was about 150,000. There was another one. I've drawn them like I did. They were not significant. They were probably 150,000, right?
All in the 150,000 range? Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. And there were only a couple of those opposed to them or just a rearrangement of the old Warehouse Square or something else.
100,000 here, 100,000 there, a little bit of money, you know.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioner? Okay. Anything down here? Yes?
I have a question to the engineer. When we do these adjustments, you know, where we work along with the DOT, wouldn't we save money if we don't have to tap a street that we, that was paved because we didn't recognize the problem before the payment is done?
If we wait to replace water mains or sewer mains until after they resurface the road, DOT would likely make us resurface more than just the patched area in order to match it back to until they resurface roads. There's a cost savings if they don't require us to do that more extensive patching. There's also, you know, the temporary patch that DOT is allowing us to do on roads if they are resurfacing rather than a permanent patch. Because they're resurfacing, we're saving money on doing temporary patches, so there's a cost savings there as well.
So the purpose of, of re, realigning things is to save money down the road?
Is to save money down the road or Public Works Department has come back to us and said, we had last year 18 water main breaks in January, so from January 2018, we found out things that 2016, when this was adopted, we did not know. So we took that into account and shifted things around to looking at streets that were having more problems than others that had been higher up the list.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? All right then. All in favor of adopting the revised 2016 Capital Improvement Plan with the changes as have been discussed? Signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10, consider approving a change order for park construction on the 2017 water main replacement project. The city needs to approve a change order with park construction. The city needs to approve a change order with park constructions to add the alternate bid items and contingency in the amount of one and a half million dollars. This additional loan is being provided by the Division of Water Infrastructure to complete the twenty seventeen water main replacement project, and this is what we've been discussing all along. The recommendation is that the staff recommends the board approve the change order with park construction for one million four hundred two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty cents with a project contingency in the amount of ninety seven thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and forty cents and an additional ninety days on the contract time to complete the additional work. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
Aye.
Okay. That motion carries six to one. Thank you very much. Item eleven, twenty seventeen sewer state reserve project task order for construction administration. Consider authorizing the city manager to sign the task order for the construction phase engineering services for the twenty seventeen sewer state reserve project with McGill Associates. The original task order covered design and, design and bidding of the project. This task order will cover the engineering services required for the work associated with construction phase and geotechnical oversight and the expenses of the grant in zero percent interest loan project that the city accepted for the sewer system. You have support information in Attachment eleven, and staff recommends authorizing the city manager to be able to sign the task order in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with McGill Associates to provide construction phase engineering services and geotechnical oversight and expenses associated with the twenty seventeen sewer state reserve project. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item twelve, consider allowing electronic advertisement for bidding. Consider allowing electronic advertisement only for bidding purposes, while electronic advertisement could be used on any project. This would be especially applicable for projects that fall under GS General Statute one forty-three dash one twenty-nine. The procedure for letting of public contracts of five hundred thousand dollars or greater for construction or repair work and ninety thousand or greater for the purchase of apparatus, supplies, materials, or equipment. Department heads could still use advertisement in the local newspaper in addition to electronic advertisement on smaller projects where they deem appropriate. And you have Attachment twelve, which is a staff report. The recommendation is staff recommends authorizing the city to use electronic advertisement only for bidding purposes. And of course, Larry Thomas commented on this in his public comments. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Curran. Were you going to motion or say something?
I have a question.
Okay? Mayor Pro Tem?
I still would like to, I'm pretty much to Mr. Thomas's opinion, I think that we do need to put it in our local paper as well. We talk about using our local businesses, so I think that we should be able to still put it in the newspaper. And I do realize that it says of a certain amount, but I think all of them should be going into the newspaper.
As I understand it, we will still use local advertising, just maybe not the full description.
Right here it says, staff recommends authorizing the city to use, utilize electronic advertisement only for bidding purposes, so...
Mr. Manager, it looks like you may have some clarification.
What that means is that we would only electronically advertise for these major projects. That's what that means. We talked last Monday, I believe, as a point of clarification about the concerns of the local newspaper and advertising in the local newspaper. These projects would be advertised, or at least notice of the local newspaper, in the local newspaper for any of our local contractors to have the ability to know that there is a project going on and where they can find the bid documents themselves. It would be noticed, published in the paper, just not necessarily a total full column that typically a complex, multi-million dollar project requires.
So, yes, sir.
Well, I was just going to simply say, I thought that we heard something about the advantages of doing electronic bidding because that's where most companies look.
Yes, that's where contractors are searching for these projects.
The contractors actually look where you want to place these items.
And with the expand our reach.
So, is it safe to say, hearing Mayor Pro Tem's comment, that what you are hoping is inherent in the motion, Commissioner Curran's motion, is that the electronic bidding is approved, but there is notice in the local papers regardless of the size of the project that directs people to be online as well as whatever notice is appropriate for smaller projects? Am I hearing, hearing that, Commissioner Curran? Is that fit in line with your motion?
That's good.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all good. Any further comments? Okay. All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. All right. Item thirteen, request the Board of Commissioners approve the updated City of Oxford Water Shortage Policy, a policy authorizing the declaration of water shortage, establishing procedures and measures for the conservation of water resources, and prescribing penalties by the City of Oxford Board of Commissioner. This policy is required by the Division of Water Resources, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and you have the policy in Attachment thirteen. Staff recommends approving the updated water shortage policy. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? Okay, I would just like to make the comment that I think the conservation measures on pages four through six are really great and helpful. I think our city engineer and her staff were, did the work on this, and would probably, when we're looking for information and advice to communicate to the public, would probably make a couple of good articles. They were really great points, I thought. So, I just want to thank you for your work on that. All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And we move forward to the consent agenda, which includes accepting the December finance report by Finance Director Hawk Ung and approving the twenty eighteen meeting minutes for December third, the agenda session, and December eleventh regular session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by, was that Commissioner Woodlock?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. And before we adjourn, comments from board members, Commissioner Woodlock, anything?
No.
Commissioner Bullock?
No.
Commissioner Fields?
Maybe a little out of order, what have you, but I would just like for the board to take a moment, silent moment, in reverence for all the tragedies that are happening to our police officers, not so much ours, but in the state of North Carolina. It just puts all of, all of them in jeopardy. And just, just a moment to show solidarity to the counties that are going through these tragedies now, because it could be us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bridges?
Yes. And this relates to law enforcement. Of course, you know, I work around the courthouse and I have an office near the courthouse, and the issue of parking is, is, is a very strong issue. And I will say that since I, of course Attorney Burnett also walks through the courthouse quite a bit, and when I walk through the courthouse, I am approached by clerks and other employees who work in our courthouse, and they are not happy that they get parking tickets right near where they work. So, for example, when a clerk leaves the courthouse to go to lunch, they gotta eat lunch, and they come back and there's no parking. They are individuals who have to go back to their jobs, and I've just had a number of clerks to approach me and just say, you know, the parking for employees who have to be there at the courthouse or, you know, who receive tickets is just unfair. And I would like us to look at and review approaches that we might be able to do to look out for, you know, our courthouse clerks and employees of the courthouse, because they got to park somewhere and, 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 you know, you know how we have handicap parking things? I thought of maybe if the clerks had something that they could hang on their car mirrors, maybe the parking patrol chalk folks would not ticket. And I know that, you know, there may be some questions about, well, is it fair for the clerks to have that? But it just seems to me that these are folks that provide services to this community, who work in that courthouse, who have worked there for years and years and years, and they literally are having difficulty finding parking. Some of them are getting tickets. And we got to figure out, I think, a way that we can protect their interests. Either have a block of parking spaces that only they can park in or some kind of, something that would allow them to park near the courthouse.
In the meantime, there is the city lot that's right on the other side of John Watson's building, which is only a block away. That, that I realize they want to park closer, but I would say until the board makes a decision about whether there would be a change in policy, at least if people are complaining, you could, in the deference to health, remind them that there's that lot on the other side of John Watson's building. People are smiling, and I'm not meaning to be seizous, but I, I'm, I'm just saying that it is not an unreasonable distance until such time as the board makes the decision to revisit it, which might be at the next meeting.
Well, that is an issue.
Thank you very much. I would like, I had meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, and I failed to last at week at our agenda meeting. The manager had had everybody see a letter notifying the City of Oxford that we had been awarded a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar community development block grant, funds for neighborhood revitalization program. And I know that came out of our Cheryl Hart and our Planning Department, and so I just wanted to let the public know, this is for scattered site housing improvements throughout the city, and I wanted to congratulate Ms. Hart and her staff for work on that because seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a big deal. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tem?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Curran?
My letter from the league is laying up there, if anybody wants to pick it up and look at it. Welcome to, have my copy.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes, I do. The subject of ethical behavior is coming, has came up tonight, and of course, we all knew that was directed to. What is ethical behavior? Is there difference between right and wrong? Now, if there's a move to get me off of this board, prove me I'm wrong. That's all you got to do. And to be honest with you, if I can't exercise my rights as a citizen, I don't need to be here. I represent more people than have been up here speaking against me. So, it comes down to a matter of what's right or wrong, and I always believed in doing what's right. And I've served this board, but I've been a victim here on other things, like the postcards. I was one of the final four. And, but you know, I always say, if you can't stand the heat, stay out of the kitchen. I haven't done anything ethically wrong. I brought attention to some things that I knew that were not right, and I don't care who they are. And I did not interject race into it, but it's very obvious because the ones that are speaking out are of the opposite race. And I'll tell you, there's nobody that cares more for police officers than I do. I've walked the streets of Durham. I know what law enforcement's all about, and I care about our officers. I care about the officers that left this department because of a hostile working environment. Nobody seems to care about that or what they said, oh, they were disgruntled employees. So, if you want to get rid of me, go ahead and do what you have to do. My term will expire in December, but if the good Lord's willing and I'm still here, I just may run again because I think I can win because I've got support out there. This is not all me that's speaking. I'm speaking for my constituents. So, let it be whatever it may be. Bring it on. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Manager?
I have nothing further to add, other than the city will be closed on Monday on the Reserve Department of Kings, Junior Hall.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And, I'm sorry, excuse me. Our SVPs for the Chamber Banquet are due on Friday, January eighteenth. The city manager just reminded us on the twenty-first, we're closed. Martin Luther King Breakfast is at eight in the morning at Oxford Baptist Church. And Mr. McCoy, what time is the celebration at Northern Gramble Middle School?
Five P.M.
Okay. Thank you. And so, there's another celebration with lots of children involvement at five P.M. at Northern Gramble Middle School, and the twenty-eighth of January is the Chamber Annual Banquet, and excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem?
First Baptist is at four.
Okay. It's at four, so earlier, I think, than it's been. And another Martin Luther King Day celebration at First Baptist Church, which is on Gramble Street, at four P.M.
That's at Sunday, isn't it?
Sunday.
Oh, that's on Sunday.
That's Sunday.
Okay. Thank you. So, the twentieth. Thank you very much. Any other announcements we need to make? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by a claim. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for coming.